Okay, welcome everybody to the Town Board Work Session of Tuesday, May 8th, 2018. First thing on our agenda is the Veterans Exemption and we have our update from our town accessor extraordinaire.
Assessor.
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 He accesses.
Okay, whatever.
Just the assessment.
Tomato, tomato.
Mr. Herman.
Thank you.
So for our veterans exemptions, as you guys remember from last time, the State Comptroller's Office is doing some audits around the state and in order to prepare for these audits, we were going through our records to ensure that the supporting documentation was there. We uncovered a few that were not, so we reached out to our veteran homeowners and at this point, we're about thirty-eight percent deficient. So we mailed out a second reminder on Friday and we're hoping that we get a better response and then we're gonna start calling folks if we can locate their phone number. So, you know, I would definitely recommend not to ignore the exemption letter and come in and see us so we can fix the problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
Joe, you know what, maybe include that in your administrative report. You could also put a separate article about it if you want also in the news letter. We have your article already.
An outreach through recreation and.
And this center?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I mean, is it appropriate for us to put the news in our email newsletter?
Oh, no, no, no.
No, not in the news.
No, 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 I was just talking about to look at the letter.
Just to say, if you receive this, please make sure to respond.
Right, right, right.
Including if you're receiving it and you are not entitled to such an exemption.
That's a failure to respond.
My guess is you'll get much of it.
She's responding, ignore it, right, right.
Well, Josh, you have that piece in there already that talks about the meetings. Meet Assessor, is that still, you still have meeting schedule?
So I was meeting tonight until about seven o'clock.
Right.
We've had five meetings outside of the normal business hours, we're actually meeting on Saturday. And I think we have maybe one or two more Tuesdays coming up, so that's been a very positive outreach and I think it's.
So I could hang out with you on a Saturday?
If you like.
We can discuss assessing, I mean, this sounds like a good night.
So he didn't say night, he didn't say Saturday night.
Let's be clear.
But we sat down with probably seventy people so far.
Wow. Good. Shouldn't mock.
That's amazing, actually.
More people come here.
But if you want, maybe if you want, you could update your, that piece. You know, get rid of some of the days that passed already and then talk about this letter that we sent.
Yeah, we could, yeah, I always encourage folks to come and speak to me directly rather than hire these reps that are perhaps not qualified or out for themselves and we're here to serve the residents.
You could even write in the piece something like, we've met with seventy residents and I would encourage residents, we haven't, you know, we still have a few more sessions left and and if you received the letter about the exemption, don't ignore it.
Okay, that goes out on Wednesdays?
Friday, well, the Wednesdays like the supervisor report. Joe could add it to our administrative report.
I could.
And then we could add it, and there'd be a newsletter as well on Friday, like as a separate piece, which it is now. Meet the Assessor, which I wanted to get a picture of you and I couldn't find one, luckily for you, but I did want to have your picture in there. So instead, I just chose a Newcastle logo, I should take one right now.
You have a very nice suit on.
Yeah.
I like the tie.
Great hair. What else should we go over?
Nothing about me, what do you think?
Alright, so we let them go, we done, thank you, Josh, we're good.
We're done.
How'd it go?
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Always a pleasure, thank you.
Definitely use one of his pictures.
Alright, downtown wayfinding signs.
Sorry, Josh.
Really, Josh?
Is that where we're going up on?
Is there one on the back with the, where the cable stuff is?
Oh, yes.
Emails myself, I don't forget.
Yeah, I know what's going on.
Yeah, that is a good picture.
Let me see.
He's a happy guy.
He is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that is a good picture, just brighten it a little bit.
Honestly, under that suit, I know you're not gonna do this, but feel his bicep. He exercises.
His biceps.
Yeah.
No, you're right, I'm not going to do it.
In the past.
He exercises, he's in good shape. You can't tell with the suit on.
I have so many questions on how you know that, but I know. Are you gym buddies?
I think I once.
So let's talk about downtown wayfinding signs.
Yes.
I think I once did find out and now every time I see him, I'm like, wow, look at it.
He gramps his biceps constantly, I'm just saying.
Alright, so consolidated, hashtag B2.
Jumping consolidated funding up and down.
Should we skip while we figure out the heat up?
Yeah, um.
We need another computer.
So, um.
Why don't we go to chap pack rates?
I don't know, I don't know the score.
Chap pack rates?
Yeah, yeah, go, go.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, the initial rates for chap pack, we're kind of page three. The initial rates, um.
This is the same time.
Yes.
Of chap pack were based on kind of what we thought as a facility that no one had ever heard of before. But now that we've been functioning for a while and we have a little bit more name, we realize that those rates are very low. And we're hearing that from tenants who come in and we tell them what it costs and they go, oh, really? That's awesome. So we realize our rates are a little low, plus it's not reimbursing us for certain things that we need to do. Such as, well, let me go through, so here's the minimum theater rental which we're proposing and these proposed rates were recommended by our theater manager, John Finelli. We discussed them many times at the Arts and Culture Committee meeting and we're coming up with these fees.
What about you in comparison to anything else relatively local, is that?
Yeah, they're, these are all really in line with local rates. So the couple things I wanted to point out, so it says individual hour added to a package if booking goes overtime. What that is, is if you say, we're gonna be done, we need a four-hour booking, but we know we're gonna wanna clean up for an hour or two, so we're gonna add on a couple hours at the beginning, that's no problem, we encourage that for people and that's one cost. But if at the back end, they decide that evening that they're going over and we have to pay overtime because we need somebody to sit there with them basically the whole time.
They bear that cost.
So this is really kind of a penalty to say book it in advance, not at the last minute when it's midnight and we've, this guy wants to go home, basically. The full day rental is twelve hours. I mean, they're pretty self-explanatory. The only thing we're not doing now, so it says the full day and full week rentals requires twenty-five dollars per hour house manager fee for all hours and activities. Because what happens is somebody may book it for a full day or even for seven days, but they're not actually in the theater for twelve hours. So we don't wanna have to charge them twenty-five dollars an hour for a house manager, they should tell us what hours they're gonna be there and then we'll, they'll pay that separately. On top of that, there's a dressing room cleaning fee which we hadn't had before. And then there are other fees that are not in here, for instance, if if we eventually get certain different lighting and theater packages that we wanted to charge extra for. What I don't see in here, but it should have been, is we also bought, got a very good price on a Marley floor, which is a floor that dance companies use. So we are now able to rent that out to people, I think it's three hundred dollars to rent that and because otherwise they have to bring it in, they, all the dance, dance studios dance on a Marley floor. So otherwise they have to pay the rent to bring it in, so now we have it, we can provide them.
What's the payoff time plan?
Like four, four rentals, I mean, we got a very good price on it.
Lisa, is there any kind of lower rate for residents, like we have a Chapacua, Newcastle residents versus?
Well, I think we did have that, but the problem is that we were finding that everyone would just book through a friend who was a resident. Even we had, you know, the Mount Kisko Synagogue would say, oh, I'm gonna use our friend who's gonna book in here, or so we.
Yeah, it just seems to me that like for some of these, you know, professional, national level acts that you guys have been able to bring in, it does seem sort of a little bit incongruous to charge the theme for them as you would for sort of a local, you know.
Oh, well.
Even a Mount Kisko synagogue rental.
Those acts that are coming in, uh, you know, promoters put those on, so yes, they're still paying these rates, the promoters.
Yeah.
But then, of course, they're paying the acts like ten thousand dollars or whatever it costs for them to come in.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah. But. Yeah, I was just thinking if there's any way that we can keep the facility rental lower for.
Well, we were thinking about, you know, local companies, so like if Dance Emotions or
Yeah.
the Chapacua Orchestra or certain Chapacua groups, but then we felt like, well, we can't necessarily, we can't differentiate between, we're not allowed to differentiate between a resident and a for-profit company, according to Nick. So that's one thing I remember him saying all the time.
A Newcastle, a Newcastle taxpaying entity couldn't be using this facility at a cheaper rate than a non-taxpaying?
No, no, you can, everybody can, but it would have to be for everybody and we're finding the problem is if anybody wants to book then they're finding a friend who lives in Newcastle
It must be way better for.
and just having a friend book it.
It must be, you know, so you have, thinking aloud, you have to have a business address.
Or if it's not a business. Or the insurance.
Insurance.
But the insurance isn't, isn't that person's actually taking out insurance as well? I mean, I understand somebody filling out the application, but when it comes to like an insurance certificate, you would think that that the real entity would.
Right. And they're gonna be on the contract, with the agreement.
Yeah.
So I mean, there's probably ways you can dissuade your average person looking for a deal from being the face of a local resident to get a little discount.
I mean, we could potentially do that if we could find enough.
Like the Chapacua Orchestra, I mean, anywhere in Newcastle shouldn't.
Yeah.
There should be some benefit in light of the fact that it's taxpayer dollars in large part that is making it happen.
Yeah, and we did give, we always gave the theater managers some discretion, so if somebody's coming in and saying, I'm gonna book this space every month for three days or whatever it is, we've given the theater manager discretion to say, well, that's a big rental, they can, you know, give a little break on a price, we did give the theater manager that discretion to do that.
I don't disagree with discretion, but again, back to issue with local residents, maybe we can seek a great way to get rid of all the issues and identify who really is a local resident or business using the facility.
Friends and family just.
And what kind of?
No, no friends and family, well, no friends and family.
Saying like that's possible.
Newcastle, no friends and family of the person who's a business or resident.
No, no, I get discount for it.
Maybe if it's their name has to be on the insurance certificate or something, then that's.
Yeah, something like that, I mean, I could see somebody filling out the application, but when it comes to actually producing the insurance certificate, that's something that the real entity would.
And does everyone have to provide an insurance certificate?
Yes.
Okay, so then that.
Yes.
For the conference rooms?
No.
Uh, I think they do, depending on what they're using it for.
Really, for a meeting?
Mm-hmm. But we've changed the conference room fee to a four-hour minimum.
Oh.
Because we're getting people, it's really, you know, we're getting like a book club calling up, I'm gonna rent the conference room. And the problem is we have to have somebody come and unlock the door for them for an hour and then someone has, then we have to pay to have it cleaned and it wasn't, it's not worth it, it's not cost-effective for the theater to do that. And then you have to have someone sit with them the whole time because you don't want people wandering around the theater. So it wasn't cost-effective to have somebody just necessarily rent it for an hour, as opposed to, I mean, the town can have meetings there, obviously. But, so we thought that there should be a four-hour minimum.
Now, that's conference fees are not on this.
Yes, that's the AP room.
Oh, that's the AP room, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, four-hour minimum, yes, yes, that's.
Yeah.
Okay, and the three hundred dollars is for all four hours?
That's what it says.
Yes.
Okay.
And you did actually reduce the seven-day rate though.
We reduced the seven-day rate, but they have to pay the twenty-five dollars for the house manager on top.
Got it, okay.
It's not, it's not in it anymore.
Okay, I see, okay.
Because it was, we felt it, we don't know how many hours they're gonna, it allows them to have to tell us how many hours we really need somebody there.
Got it.
Alright.
Okay.
Okay.
When this town is.
So we'd like to get these done soon because we have a lot of interest in books and.
On the day, should we increase rates?
So do we need to, we need to pass this?
We'd like to increase rates.
We will need a resolution to pass these fees, but do we want to go back and have you discuss lower fees for residents or?
I, my view, unless anyone disagrees, is let's get this moving forward, just do it and then we can figure out how we construct the language to make the lower fees for residents. But if you need this, if you need this fee schedule soon, I just get it done.
Very short, maybe.
Why wait another two weeks?
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Let's just get this done, get this out and then we'll work on something to.
Because we, yeah, because we need to discuss the resident, non-resident, because are they supposed to
Better than.
be delving into who owns the company and who's, you know, so we need to talk about that further.
But if the, if the town wants to go forward with this, we just need a resolution.
Yeah.
Okay, so Christina's gonna take and type that up now. I realize that there's one other thing on the, very quickly, on the work session that wasn't included on the agenda and that is, so we have purchased the electronic sign, we're in the midst of, they have cleared away the abandoned.
From here.
Gassmain.
On the corner.
Or there.
Gassmain that was buried, they have specifications for the footing, the concrete footing and we just received final bids for the frame that's gonna hold the two signs in like a pie shape.
Mm-hmm.
For many of which is, okay, so, um.
I mean, I know.
Discuss the development of that.
Yeah, so there are.
Soon it underdressed, but I wasn't a part of the conversation last year about this.
Right.
Okay, so the signs have been purchased, they just, they literally are going to sit in a frame, the spades.
It's kinda like the electronic sign. Really, kind of.
Yeah, the spades.
I don't know what the electronic sign really is. Oh, okay, okay, okay.
So the spades took and did a very attractive design with a stone facade on the bottom, it's going to have a copper roof.
Took a message for it.
Yeah.
Verness.
And we got the, we got the bids, aluminum structural steel versus steel structural.
The school board's chipping in.
Yeah, they're splitting it with us.
Oh, okay.
Well, they're gonna get Charles White horse.
So we're gonna, we're recommending the seventeen thousand five five oh bid of sand signs and awning. Bob is suggesting that there'd be a contingency, so the total bid for it would be nineteen thousand five hundred. And then after two weeks, once they get the authorization to proceed, it will be two months, we'll get it in and then we'll just be able to sell it all.
Okay, and does that, is the, is that price our price or that's the combined price and the school board's gotta approve it as well?
The total price or half?
No, this is the total price.
Okay, so the town would pay half?
Yes. You're good with that, so there's, I think that's one of the resolutions that she has in a packet. Okay? Okay, um, great, you wanna go back to the downtown wayfinding?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
So, um, this is the Empire State Trail that we had looked at earlier. Sorry, my gosh, you cast that. That's it. Well, I know, I just wanted to get to the pages where the.
This is introduction.
Okay, so we had talked about the fact that we were interested in having something like the Empire State Trail signage in our downtown, something that would brand Newcastle and the idea was floated that perhaps we should refer this to the ARB and see if they would have some ideas for us. These, some of these signs will be in Newcastle, they're gonna be in Millwood by the North County Trail because that's part of the Empire Trail system. So the question is whether or not the board is interested in continuing this kind of signage for our downtown hamlet or?
Oh, you said this kind of signage, are you imagining this kind of signage or are you just saying extent, like developing a sort of
Noting this, yeah, not this large.
design guideline, like a, a sort of, you know, style guide for how our wayfinding signage is meant to look?
See like the one of the far left is that something.
My, I am not by any stretch qualified to be deciding what is design appropriate and I have no problem bringing in somebody.
I would second that.
Yes, excuse me. I would, I would approve of having involvement of another board that is equipped with.
Yes, yes.
Skills to make these determinations.
I agree.
Definitely.
I agree.
But that being said.
Because you know, no matter what you choose, meaning we collectively, it will be wrong.
Yeah.
And it's not something that I wanna be saddled or burdened with, I think we should open up the conversation.
Yeah.
Yes, but that being said, I don't think we need to match what the State Trail.
Yeah, that's a pretty.
Yeah.
The reason that I liked this presentation had less to do with what this looks like and matching this, as it was that it's very thorough in terms of laying out, you know, for a sign on a street corner, it looks like this, for a sign on a bike path, it looks like this.
Yeah, yes.
So like just kind of following that sort of layout for what, what the, like, what is the style guide for wayfinding signs for the town in Newcastle?
Right, so Adam had come up with a list of about ten, ten landmarks for lack of a better, points of interest within town.
Ten. Yeah. Thanks. Yeah.
Is the board interested in having a freestanding sign like the far-left one? Is it something that maybe the board would be interested in incorporating into perhaps one of the decorative light posts?
Sure, I, to me, I mean, that's, to what you already just said, I don't know, it all looks fine and good to me, I mean, I don't know if the shoes she's wearing are appropriate for hiking, but.
Yes. Okay.
Just run it to the update.
And I don't know, what would it look like being incorporated into a decorative sign posted like stuff on it?
Um, you know, what's. True.
So.
Right, with two, two bolts.
So if here's the post and we have like these for the banners, having signs like this, you know, so normally a banner would go here.
Right.
But instead having.
I'd hate to use the spots for the banners.
No, you wouldn't necessarily, but the point is, is that there would be less clutter on our new streets.
On the roads, yeah.
You know, so as opposed to, you know, there's.
How long was it, should it say ARB, which, is that the board?
So it's a very just question whether or not the ARB.
So why don't we kick it to ARB and say, ARB, can you suggest, come down to like a few different options, you know, you go to buy.
Well, 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 I'm gonna ask council because the ARB under the town code has specific authority and the town board asking a question about wayfinding signs for the town is not an expressed responsibility of the ARB, so if you want the ARB to be charged with this endeavor, we would probably have to give them the authority to do it.
Can we do a press?
I'm trying to.
Can we say, hey, guys?
I, I just have to do, last time we asked them to work with the planning board on sign code for Chapacua crossing, it was disastrous.
Well, that was a different situation. That was different because the planning board didn't listen to their recommendations, I think we're gonna.
Who's gonna say we will?
I know, well, you know, we're asking them to basically come up with a solution for us and by the way, it also may be a good idea to, well,
We're asking for success.
Yeah, we're coming to that.
wait till the streetscape is done before we add the signage, maybe we wanna see how it looks and where the signs would go. You know, before we start adding stuff where we haven't even seen the finished product yet.
That sounds pretty reasonable, but nonetheless, we can start the conversation with ARB and get them on board.
True.
That is a reasonable.
And I'll look into whether we have to issue their authority, if there's some way we can ask them to do it, we're in, correct, I'll take a hard look at that.
We're in. Was, I would thought that wayfinding signs was something that we were going to use the contingency in our budget for.
The contingency, one point five.
Well, that's what I'm asking, that was, that was a part of my question.
Oh.
The question is really like, how are we thinking about paying for this and so, you know, were we thinking we were gonna have money left over in the budget for the streetscape project and we'll be able to leverage for wayfinding signs? Or are we, you know, is this part of the conversation that we're having about how to use the one point five?
Well, I don't, you know, we, I'm trying to.
CFA?
CFA?
Are there grants for this?
Well, it all depends how, okay, but if we're talking about ten signs, do we really wanna, you know, spend that on a, you know, a grant or as opposed to doing it something where it would be more substantial and make more of an impact? If the board is only interested in a very limited weight-bearing sign application, then, you know, a CFA application is a pretty hefty, you know, undertaking and.
I simply, again, I'm sometimes right, but I don't have the answer, I need some, I need some guidance, should we have twelve guides, twenty signs?
I'm only asking in. I'm only asking in terms of timing, so if Bob is saying like, oh, let's wait until the streetscape project's over, then we can take a look at what's been done and we can figure out where the signs need to go and, you know.
You could budget for next year also.
Do we then have the capability to still use the contingency funds in the project code or whatever?
Yes. Yeah, if, yes, and at that point, the dust would also.
Yeah.
We could add a lot of additional budget.
Well, then it's not, you didn't see money anymore, if we're done and it goes back.
Oh, no, 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 because, because I fully expect that we will be paving, the final paving, in twenty nineteen.
Or it's still.
So there will be, the project will be gone, there will be punchless ditos.
So it'll, it'll roll anyway, yeah, okay, right.
Yeah. Because, you know, the board will have to make decisions, I mean, there's gonna be, at some point when the dust settles, there's gonna be decisions made about, you know, how much money we have to extend sidewalks, you know, we made a commitment to do the granite curving, so we would have an option for the sidewalks, but while we still have contractors in town, maybe that's something that we wanna do, you know, sooner rather than later since, you know, it's important to you and we want.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nice to have versus one. Okay, good, alright, um, okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna ask the ARB, I'm gonna give them a list of ten and ask them whether or not they have any thoughts. And maybe also be that individual ARB members may have a thought.
Yeah.
I mean, they were very helpful with the streetscape.
Yeah, that's how it was with the streetscape, we just had Bob Shenkam and.
Right. Yeah.
Might have been it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to do that, I think that'd be great.
Joe, just let me look into whether or not we have the authority to ask the ARB to do that for us and versus asking.
Can't we ask members as citizens to help us out?
We could also ask the streetscape committee, whoever's in there, and then Bob Shenkam was in there.
It's not as official.
Right, we could, we could do that as well.
Right.
We got Dana Burke in there, who recruited, we got Beth Hunden from Whispering Flines, I mean, that's a whole, this is right up their alley.
Very creative people on that one.
Yeah.
Absolutely, so it's good, it's great. Okay, great. Um.
About to bring in the.
Uh, Sabrina, you wanna talk about, well, let's talk about consolidated CFA priorities. Do we have any thoughts about what kind of direction we'd like to give Sabrina, as far as priorities go?
Well, I wouldn't mind seeing if we get some grants for the chap line, I know we still are studying it, but if we can
Me too.
get funds for it, that should be relevant for the decision, I mean, as long as we're not jeopardizing another request by asking for it, you know what I'm saying?
What are the things that are out there in terms of projects that we've identified in the comp that we think are CFA eligible?
So we had submitted a Hudson River Valley Estuary Grant for this, the final study for the Upper Minkel Dam.
Right.
Oh, it's probably still have that issue.
We would. We, we would submit a CFA in the event that we don't get the HRA grant because that is pretty much already been written, it's a matter of just putting it out in CFA terminology. So that is one and it's not about jeopardizing one project over another, it really comes down to workload management in that regard. That is the only project that we have submitted a grant for most recently and we would wanna submit again, so we have that monies or another shot at getting monies if we don't get the first monies. You know, you guys have all talked about different projects, you know, the chap line was one of them, you know, one of the things we talked about was, you know, at some point you're working with the planning board on, you know, the brainstorming for Chapacua, there are different phases of that project to help the whole public engagement in that, that we could apply for funding for, for example, do three D modeling of existing zoning with potential future zoning, you know, these are definitely things that are appropriate for certain funding lines within the grant. You know, it's a question of what your interests are based on what you've talked about, if you're talking about the chap line, are we looking for planning and feasibility monies or are we looking for implementation monies, I mean, there's different categories and different funding sources depending.
You apply for both?
We probably would not get implementation monies without first doing the feasibility study, they like to see that you are moving forward and have laid groundwork for your next ask, if you will. So, you know, so it really depends on what your board priorities are, you know, if you wanted to do wayfinding, we could do a wayfinding application
Also, I mean.
and the wayfinding application would include developing a brand for the community, you know, it really depends on how extensive you wanna get.
I guess I'm just thinking that, you know, we went through an exercise earlier this year of identifying what our priority goals were within the comp plan. Do those priority goals lend themselves to applications that we should be submitting for this grant?
Um.
Have we crosswalked the goals for this year?
I I have looked at them, s- some of them are two are not yet formed enough, if you will. You know, developing a master sidewalk plan would be an eligible activity, you know, that was something we were working on to do in-house, but if you wanted to submit an application on that, we could do that. Um you know, last year, we submitted for the streetscape project for the stormwater aspects of the streetscape project, we did not receive funding on that. We had also submitted for um a redevelopment rec- grant for Chappaqua, we did not receive that. We submitted for build-out analyses for both Chappaqua and Millwood, we did not receive that. So, you know, i- it's it's really um, what you're interested in submitting for is a lot of staff time. You know, I cannot see us submitting more than two, potentially three applications at this point, and it really depends on where you want me to focus.
Let me ask uh two questions, number one, is is there any way that the water tower fits to any of these types of grants or any grant whatsoever in light of the fact that that's a must-have in a couple of years, if not sooner?
Outplanting?
Potentially, I'd have to look into it, I mean, part of this conversation is that I can look into whether or not this is.
Because that's a must-have, and relatively speaking, whether we get money from A and B, it can be moved internally around, but if we can get the money from outside to help with that water tower, that is a real significant amount.
Is there a clean water grant that we would qualify for?
No, it's all financially based.
Oh, okay.
That's the thing also, I was gonna say, I mean, some of these aren't financially based.
Right.
Some of them are not.
But some some of them, like, I forgot, what are the funds last year, they were like, I mean, like Newcastle's never gonna get a grant for that, I forgot which one it is, the year last year, man, we talked about.
Right, it went to Kingston, right?
The uh.
That's the redev- that's the redevelopment grant, yeah, one, we're not big enough, and two, we don't have a have enough of a diversity
That is a redevelop.
Right.
Yeah. Diverse enough.
in our community to to even get put on the radar.
But I thought that that even the water quality ones were were financially.
Right.
We tried. We're, yeah, yeah, they're 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 tough.
Yeah.
It's time to.
The.
So so the stronger applications involve like the chap line, they involve coordinating with the school district, we'd have to get letters of support from the school district,
Right, that's what I'm saying.
letters of support from property owners, really showing a collaborative effort towards a common goal. And that's like Upper Minkle Dam, that is a a D E C mandate that we need to go one way or another, there's a lot of other parties involved that would support the direction we would go in, those make the application stronger, higher qu- higher point receipt on the different categories of the scoring of the grants.
Let me ask the second question is, um you're obviously busy, as I joked before, we're about helping someone else out in another community about the comp plan. Um is it, does it, is it something to reconsider that we've kind of discussed before about maybe having someone from outside also pursuing grants that they can get a piece of the pie if they're successful? So that you're not burdened with, if you have, we we know there's two or three main ones that you can dedicate time and staff to, but there may be some ancillary ones or some other ones are good, they're not not top priority, it's you smiling, I mean, I don't know if it's a good smile or bad, but
Well, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, we could, we could have somebody say, okay, you get X percentage of whatever, if we can't, oh, oh.
The other thing is you have to make it.
So the grant gateway opened up at for for the consolidated funding application, opened up on May first, it closes July twenty seventh.
I don't think it works that way. Yeah.
So, you know.
So it's it's young for lack of trying on our part, it's just a matter of these entities are actually very um expensive to hire.
So so.
They don't work on contingencies, we look at their.
Well, what, okay, so then why are we having this conversation today?
I don't think you'd be allowed to get grammar in it now.
If it opened on May first, why didn't we have this conversation on April first?
Well, you would, but again, it's it's money's fungible, right?
Right, I mean, can we next year?
If 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 you're saying ten dollars and you get a grant for two dollars and you gotta pay someone fifty cents, the money's all in terms of total, I assume at ten dollars.
Well, like it's uh, like it's still a little bit hard for it, I mean.
No, I know, but you know, yeah, you're you're right, that's not enough time to bring somebody in and and ask them to write an application, so.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No, but but I mean, it's not that we, it's not that we didn't explore it, well, the conversation that we had had last year was, I was unable to find anyone who does it on a contingency basis. These entities are very expensive, we had um budgeted fifty thousand dollars to either do a study or or have something to do with grants. The, a grant writer would take a minimum of fifty thousand dollars, come and monopolize Sabrina's time because she's the one who has most of the information in order for them to be able to write the grant, and there was no guarantee of of us being successful, frankly.
Do they run workshops for how to write these grants successfully and?
Sure, there are training scheduled all throughout the month of May and June.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, on on, you know, for municipalities to come here about the different fundings, there's webinars online about the different grant programs and whatnot.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, I I I mean, it's not, we're not receiving grants because our gra- grant applications aren't strong enough, not nine out of ten times because our project isn't feasible and we don't have enough diversity.
I mean, you look at the people that get these grants, it's not exactly like, you know, Scarsdale, Newcastle, I mean, you look at the names of the people, when it, when the list comes out and we're not on it, you look at the people.
So so but here.
True, but not in all cases.
Well, well, let's just paint a story for them, because if you ask me what the priorities, you know, you have spoken about two very strong priorities.
Look at the bigger ones.
The chap line and the whole uh brainstorming regarding redevelopment of Chappaqua. And in order to write the grant, you need to build the story, you guys have adopted a comprehensive plan which has specific goals for both of those projects. You have taken specific actions in the last several months regarding at least one of those. So there is a, there is definite um forward movement by the community to meet the goals of the comprehensive plan which score us very high for a specific ask for a specific project. When we go in and we're being very general, we wanna be designated as a revitalization community, you know, because we have this, we have no industry. We have no people living downtown, we don't, we have no diversity, so it does, it's not really realistic, it's like a shot in the dark because we decided, you know, that was something at that juncture that town board wanted to apply for, you know, and so, you know, the Upper Minkle Dam is very concrete. We know what we're asking for, we have estimates from two contractors to do the analysis, we know what the end game is, this is the final piece. You know, so so the more implementation oriented the project is, the stronger your application is.
Though, but you also said that you, sometimes it's advantageous to have submitted like a planning grant prior to your implementation grant.
Absolutely, but we we already, we received a planning grant for Upper Minkle Dam already.
Yeah.
We were not advised by the consultant as part of the delivery of the grant of that analysis that we needed to incorporate groundwater analysis as part of that study. So now we need to go out and do a separate groundwater study, and that costs money, money that we did not budget for, money that we need in order to perform the work that needs to be done to perform you all with a basis for making a decision as to whether or not the dam should be removed or upgraded.
When you apply through Grants Gateway, are you selecting which grants you're applying for, for which project? And so, okay, um so I feel like we need, I need to, um I want to go and look at what are all of those grant opportunities?
Mm-hmm.
And think about which of the projects we've identified?
I'm happy to send you all.
And how they match up with those opportunities.
Why why are we gonna find out about the Upper Minkle?
I don't know.
It seems to me we need to make sure that whatever we're submitting is 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 feasible and fits what the grant is that we're trying to apply for.
Yeah, it gives us the best shot to get it.
And not just, not just go for our top three projects and try to try to fit them, but really think about, you know, oh, this project works really well with this grant.
Which is where it does go to the motions.
Right, and which we wish, we should, like you said, put the application, it gives us the best chance of success.
Right, right.
Not just like trying to create a lot of.
Right, we we had very.
Not sure about priorities, but the ones we do, we can win.
We, yeah, but we had very spirited discussions about this in in the past and.
Right.
Okay, well, I wasn't there for that, so I'm sorry about making you repeat yourself.
No, 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 no.
I don't remember the spirited conversations about grants.
You you missed, you 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 know, sorry, you you missed the point completely, I did I didn't mean that wrong.
I didn't get the spirited conversations about grants.
What I meant was is that there was in the past, there was a, it it wasn't, that wasn't always the strategy that was utilized in the past. And there were spirited discussions where there was a difference in opinion as to whether or not the strongest application should be put in or
Oh, I see.
For the project, right.
the project that we wanted to proceed with, even though it wasn't a good fit for the um the, for the grant opportunity. And what what I was trying to say, and I'm so sorry that took me so long to get there, was that I appreciate the fact that you recognize that although it may not be on our top list, another project is a perfect fit for the grant opportunity, and so that's what you go for, because
Right.
if you have a better shot of getting it, that's the one you take, and I appreciated that, so, sorry it took me very long to get there, but that's, but that's what I was trying to say in a very obviously wrong way to do it.
Yeah. Sorry.
So, yeah, that's great, so.
Okay. Well, they should try to obviously check out as many boxes as possible and and see which ones give us the best chance of success.
And let's see, let's see which ones fit, um. Um.
Could be a good thing for a matrix.
So while.
I, I'm literally thinking of the matrix in my head right now.
Um so so while Sabrina is here, because one of the things that we're trying to do is, we're trying to get out the animal watermelon. And so there was a discussion as to what inserts should be included in there. And as you guys may or may not be aware, there was a shuttle schedule that was included, so Janice did some amazing artwork, it's really great. But the question was raised as to whether or not this is something that we are pursuing at this moment, should we include it, should we hold it?
Well, I don't think we should include it, cause we could decide not to scrap it for now. If it's not, I mean, we don't need to decide that decision right now, but if we include the schedule, then we just made it more difficult to scrap it.
Do we have information on the use of the trailer?
Then again, people may decide to decide using it.
No, I think.
There are four, there are four riders using it on a daily basis as, you know, in the morning and the evening peak train service, and there are several other passengers, I'd say anywhere from three to four other passengers at various times,
Mm-hmm.
but there are four regular passengers on that bus.
So in the morning and in the night?
In the morning and in the night.
And for the most part, other than those few other people, that's it?
Correct, but we have not done any advertising, we don't have any advertising on the bus.
But we also have.
Right, do do you even know what the schedule is?
Yes.
Yes, I I I've been working with Seth Corwin, uh who is under contract with Chappaqua Crossing to operate the bus.
Where does it?
I have a schedule that we just finished today and finalized today, which was, you know, put into a flyer. I spoke with Seth about putting um something in the window identifying it as the shuttle, um.
Right, but I mean, does any third party know right now what the schedule is if they wanted to take the shuttle bus?
No, not really.
Only the people who are moving into the Kupla Building relying on.
Do they know that shuttle schedule?
I'm sure they do. I am sure they do.
But we haven't created a flyer for them, it would be something.
No, no, no.
Well, I also think that.
Or put it on the website or anything.
Yeah, there's been no advertising whatsoever.
Yeah.
I mean, and 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 there is discussion, you know, about people who wanna do lunch service down here and up at Chappaqua Crossing in the cafeteria. You know, there's been discussion on it, but we haven't advertised this bus to get people to ride it.
So do, so do you wanna hold it and we can advertise it other ways?
Well. The thing is, the thing is, we, what happens if we reach, if we reach a deal with them, we start using the shuttle, I mean, I think we should advertise the schedule, that's fine, but the picture is a school bus.
Such as.
And it's very cute, don't get me wrong.
Uh look, they're, please, I mean, it doesn't, it, we are trying.
But. The school bus is a problem, I think.
Why is the, why is the picture a school bus?
Cause you try to make it.
And that's what's running against it right now.
That's the problem.
Yeah, but that's, but that's a temporary, when do we take possession of the bus, the van, the electric?
Well, we haven't reached a deal with them yet, though.
We should have, it should be shipped next Friday, but we haven't reached an agreement with Chappaqua Crossing for them to use it.
But I think we will, but. I think we will, but we just haven't yet, so we can't really put that picture on it yet either, I think we say, I say we leave off the picture. We put the schedule, we just put the, we put the, yeah, because we don't know what it's gonna look like, and quite honestly, if it's.
Put the bus. Mm-hmm.
Yes, you can't, just put the schedule, it doesn't, you know.
The school bus doesn't exactly
Put the schedule and where the stops is.
encourage people to use it, so why should we advertise a school bus, if anything, we wanna get, we would love to advertise a shuttle, but we were not in a position to do that yet. The electric shuttle, I mean.
So can't we just put the schedule, maybe a picture of where the stops are?
We could use a school bus for like the e-newsletter or like online, because that's something that we could just change, but as far as the mailing, that's gonna go out to people and.
Who cares if there's a school bus picture on it, just put the darn schedule, I don't care what you do and how you do it.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Cause then they may look for a school bus, though.
You don't need a picture of a school bus, like.
I don't, I mean, again, this is not North Korea, South Korea here, this is just uh, let's just move forward, schedule.
Schedule and stops, I think, are the most important. Schedule stops and a sign in the bus that says shuttle bus.
Not something of such a great, you know, import.
You know, I'm 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 also very interested, and I guess I will follow back up again with Ed, because I didn't get a full understanding of where the what the status of the negotiation is around the the electric shuttle, and I am interested in figuring out.
Well, he should tell all of us that.
Well, I mean, I asked, or even with all of us copying.
Thanks. But we'll uh.
That's probably an executive, maybe.
Exactly, yeah, but we'll get.
Okay.
Let's just get the schedule out.
Uh Ed Phillips might know more, he's been handling the shuttle.
Right.
He does know it.
Let's just get the shuttle, let's get the schedule out.
But he should come in and.
Okay.
With the bus, I don't care, put the bus on.
I'll do it.
I don't know.
I don't know. But I'm saying you should come in. All right, Energize New York?
Yeah.
Well, I'm.
The decisions we make.
So um on the agenda tonight is the, is approving the Energize New York agreement. It was brought to my attention that um the board did not formally workshop the agreement and take a look at it. Um the agreement is amended in conjunction with the local law in response to change in the state law. Um Newcastle had an agreement back in twenty fifteen, again, this is just um an updated version.
Okay.
Good luck, Sabrina.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sabrina.
Bye.
She got the pictures, cool, cool.
Again, this is the.
Don't pick, that's what I was about.
This agreement, they're sending to um all the municipalities that are, that have been, have have had previous agreements with them. Um so it's a, it's standard agreement, we've looked, we've looked through it, um haven't had any problems or, you know, we've worked kind of everything out with with um Energize New York, but does the board have any, any questions, did you look at it, you know?
I do.
We're not at liberty to change any of the language, right?
Right.
Correct.
Right.
So then what's the?
So so we.
So. We can't change it. We're all putting pages, but like.
Well, if there's anything, you know.
Yeah, we can change it, just to let you know.
We've looked at it, but if there's any anything that's burning, we have to go back to them and try and negotiate it, but they're.
Yeah, no. Because it literally has to be the same agreement in every municipality.
In every municipality.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Which is why I really wasn't listening to you. I get you.
Yeah, it's it's what it is.
Well, it's, but it's good, it's not, you know, bad thing. And we got. And we've looked at it and we have worked with them to overcome any any issues, I mean, Newcastle's not the first to sign this, so kind of the first group of of municipalities, I think Bedford was early on, so our our attorney Eric Gordon also worked on this as well and worked with them to say, hey, guys, you should probably change this a little bit. So at this point, it has gone through, and you know, we're comfortable with what, you know, everything that sounds like.
Well, we have Nick, we have Ed, I mean, they have Eric, so Nick may have different views.
We all work together.
I don't know, but I like Nick, I think I think I have Nick.
Nick would do this too, cause.
Nick Gruro.
No, actually, it was not Nick, it was a guru, I said it was somebody else.
I don't think.
I know, but I call him guru.
I don't think Nick actually knew that Eric was working on it, I was on the, you know, bottom.
I don't believe that, I don't believe that. True, I don't believe that, don't piss my shit, Nick. All right, next thing, next thing.
Um I think that's it for work session.
That's it for uh work session.
Can I move, can I move us out?
Then we're gonna go to our town board meetings.
Yes.
I moved, I moved us out to adjourn, I'm on work session.
Well, favor.
Bye.
Bye.